I'd like to invite everyone to please stand and join with me in saying the pleasure of the evening.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a very special award, I think, to be presented by the Quality of Life Commission and Woody Weingarten, so welcome, Woody.
Thanks. It's my pleasure tonight to honor Heather Itler, not only because she's an unsung hero, but because she's unstoppable, a doer who has started a website showing that we are all responsible for plastic pollution, every one of us. Almost two years ago, Heather began picking up discarded plastics on her one-hour walks at Memorial Park, in her neighborhood, near the Brookside School on Butterfield Road, Sleepy Hollow Creek in Creek Park, as well as on downtown streets. She arranged those pieces of plastic, in my eyes, in the artistic way, and posted photographs of them on her website to show folks it is our waste, the things that we pack along with our kids and grandkids on their way to school or practice, pieces left behind after birthday celebrations in the park, odds and ends that fall out of our cars when we do our errands. "We," she points out, "are actively contributing to the plastic garbage in the oceans." Heather has initiated a petition seeking to remove compostable plastics from circulation in Marin, and she's started a broad educational campaign to show local residents that bioplastics are not, as many believe, being composted in the county, but instead are being shipped to landfill, which simply overincreases our solid waste. She's also been meeting with business and community leaders about switching to plastic, uh, excuse me, paper straws and compostable cutlery in their to-go packages. As if that were not enough, she's been in touch with a lot of organizations that are interested in clean water, clean streets, clean parks, and she's initiated a Cascade Canyon School project in Fairfax, donating zero-waste back-to-school kits that are 100% plastic-free supplies. It's obvious that she's 100% committed. It's equally obvious that she's 100% deserving of the Quality of Life Commission Green Award. So Heather, please come on up now and receive it.
Thank you so much. It's very nice, and I hope this lends some credibility to me as I walk around picking up everybody's straws and forks and plastic, because it can look a bit odd, so thank you so much.
Heather, could you tell us what your website is?
Okay. It's called thereisnoaway.net, and it's mostly San Anselmo trash that's on there. It's a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on. The next item is open time for public expression. The public is welcome at this time to address the counsel on matters that are not on our agenda, that are within the jurisdiction of the counsel. Just be advised that pursuant to the government code, we're not permitted to take or discuss, we're not permitted to discuss or take action on any matter that's not agendized unless we determine that an emergency exists, or there's the need for immediate action arose following the posting of the agenda. I ask that you please keep your comments to no longer than three minutes, and be respectful to the community, and I'd also like to ask at this time if everyone be sure to silence your cell phones. So does anybody have any public comment at this time? Okay? Okay, come on up and please introduce yourself, say where you live, and welcome.
Thanks. Do you guys want copies of my statement, or are you good?
You can go ahead and give it. You're welcome to leave a copy with our town manager if you want.
Sure, okay.
Yeah.
Go ahead and make your statement.
Yeah, go ahead.
Sounds good to me. So my name's Jesse Gross. I live in the Short Ranch neighborhood, just off San Francisco, and I'm a lifelong resident of San Anselmo. I've grown up on the corner of San Anselmo Avenue and Scenic. In high school, moved to Community A Herrera. I bought my first house on Forest, and then in the weeks before my son was born, my wife and I bought our second house on San Francisco, or just off San Francisco. Some of the best moments of my life have been spent in Memorial Park. I'm lucky enough to squeeze the final out of the clinching game of the San Anselmo All-Star Team's first-ever victory in our hometown tournament, and my, you know, actual proof is not, not that anybody wouldn't believe me with such a, you know, far-fetched tale, but the story's there. Anyways, I played every level of soccer in Memorial Park, from rec all the way up through Drake High, playing games there. I took tennis lessons and met friends for pickup games in the tennis courts. My dad's 50th birthday party was held at the barbecue pits in the upper section of the park. And actually, in the very first weeks of my courtship with the woman that I'd eventually marry, we looked up at the clouds and found as many animals as we could as we lie in the grass. Like any parent, I want to give my son every opportunity I had and more, but the majority of the proposed plans for Memorial Park have, take away many of those opportunities. He wouldn't be able to play soccer. He wouldn't be able to hold my 50th birthday party there. He couldn't play host to an All-Star Team tournament where he played in it. Half or three-quarters of the tennis courts would be unavailable for his use, and he would never have the feeling of crushing a homer over the diamond two fence. That my wife and I chose the neighborhood surrounding Memorial Park when selecting the location that we refer to as our forever home is really no coincidence. We viewed the park as the ideal center of the universe where our life, our community, could radiate. That a plan which removes or compromises many vital elements of the park is even being considered leaves me to believe that the park is being drastically undervalued as a town asset. I love this town as a whole, and I've seen the devastation that floods bring to the downtown and surrounding areas, but nothing that I've seen within the proposed plans actually illustrates that what's suggested is an effective solution. Jeopardizing the primary town park of this small, family-forward community should be a last resort in flood prevention. Instead, presumably because it's the path of least resistance, it's what the council has latched on to as the only option. I would challenge this council to develop a more holistic solution, identify alternative retention basin sites, publish more candid information about the pros and cons of any proposed project, and to stop using the required infrastructure upgrades at Memorial Park as a bargaining chip. Thank you for your time.
Your things, pass them.
Yeah.
It's easy to forget.
Yeah, absolutely.
Is there any other public comment now?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So my name is Ben Godfrey. I live at 125 Santa Cruz. I am Jesse's neighbor, and as a young father, my daughter's the one outside screaming, so she's not here. I just want to make clear what you guys are doing to the park is, I mean, I don't go to the park that often. I take my daughter to the park, and it's about these girls right here, and they live in my neighborhood, walk my dog, and take my daughter to the park, and they wanted to say a couple things to you guys as well, so.
Hi, my name is Sophia Spindell, and this is my reason to keep Memorial Park. Memorial Park, over the years, or months, or weeks, has taken a place in our hearts, memories for everyone, like the time me and my friend Stacy went to the snack shack and watched the baseball game, or like the time when we went dog walking. See, Memorial Park is a place for everyone, and if you take that away from us, we won't have a place to do all those things, and not just everybody, not just us, everybody. So all we're asking is to keep Memorial Park. Thank you for listening.
Hello, I'm Stacy Zapparosova, and these are my reasons to keep Memorial Park. I have been going to Memorial Park ever since I've moved to San Anselmo. Over the years, I have learned that it is my favorite park. I have had most of my birthday parties there. I remember playing in the playground and hitting the pinata and getting tons of candy. I have fun seeing old friends and meeting new friends at Memorial Park. As a dog walker, I take most of the dogs, I walk there, to Memorial Park. At the park, the dogs have fun staying hideout of their dogs and meeting new friends. If you take this away from the dogs, where would the dogs go to meet new friends? My family loves Memorial Park. It is a treasure of the neighborhood. Everyone loves it. If you take Memorial Park away, it will take a part, a part of my heart away. It won't only take a part of my heart away, it'll take a part of everyone's heart who goes there. Our neighborhood won't be as happy as it is if you take Memorial Park away. Thank you for listening.
Is there any other public comment?
Hi, my name is Carol Marks, and I'm Jesse Gross's mom, and I've spent years and years at Memorial Park from the time my kids were really tiny, in the playground, where they met some of the kids who would eventually be their lifelong friends, two birthday parties, two years and years of softball, baseball, soccer games. But what I want to speak to about the park and what it means to me is a sense of community, because in those days, we didn't have cell phones. As a working mom, Memorial Park was one of the few places I could relax and really get to know my neighbors, the parents of my kids' friends, spending three hours every Saturday, every Sunday. There was a real sense of community that happened at the park, and that's really what it symbolizes for me. And I don't know exactly what the plans are, but I understand that it would disrupt that gathering place for young and middle-aged parents, and it was so important in raising our children and getting support from the community, sharing our problems, really getting some ideas on how to grapple with difficult things. And that doesn't happen in a lot of other places, because we're too busy passing, picking kids up, dropping kids off. So I would really encourage the council to think of ways to maintain that, and I personally will volunteer to serve on a committee to work on improving Memorial Park, making it even better than it is now, if that would be helpful. Thank you for your time.
Could you tell us your address or where you live?
Right now, I live at 4 Camino de Herrera in San Anselmo, and previously lived on San Anselmo Avenue.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Okay, saying none? Okay.
Jennifer Asselstein, 1365 San Anselmo Avenue. I'm here as an architect. I'm here as someone who worked on the playground in 2000. I just want to say, as an architect, I deal with money and people and program, or the description of needs, and long-term and short-term planning, and I would just think, I've just read the website that's been established that started to try and answer many of the questions that have come up from the community on the plans for the park. I don't find it very complete. I find it very subjective when it refers to improving the park, because you, it's very clear to me as a designer, as a land and architectural designer, that you're going to lose program. You're going to lose the ability to meet all of the elements that currently exist in the park, and therefore, it's very subjective to say that it's an improved park, it actually will be a changed park, and I would, I think it's really important to be clear about these things upfront and not use subjective language when you're initiating something so important to your community. I think that there's also a lot of information about costs that is not apparent in the short webpage that you've initiated. I think that it's not transparent how you're going to come up with how to maintain this park as a flood basin, what happens when you have to restore it after, after an event, and how often you're going to have to use it as a preventative basin versus, you know, when it's, when it's an absolute need. I think that there's going to be a lot of cost to that, and I don't think that there's a transparency to how that is going to happen. Obviously, it's not decided, and you've been clear about that, but that's actually not a small thing when we talk about the fact that, you know, the reason we're doing this is because of the drastic cost to repairing the downtown when these things, when these events happen. So I think this actually has to be addressed now, not later. And I also think that the initial costs of the park are not transparent, how you're actually going to create the basin itself and actually cover all of the costs of all of the amenities that give you the ability to say subjectively that it will be improved, when it is, as these girls have so very clearly said, the treasure of the town. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment? Okay, saying none, bring it back to the council. We have council requests for future agenda items, council committee liaison reports, questions and comments to staff, and staff miscellaneous items. I start down Ford. Do you have anything?
No, I don't.
Okay. Doug?
No.
I would, I would just like to thank the people who came to speak and to tell you that we are listening. Thank you very much for your time. Thanks for bringing your kids out. We're very grateful for your input. Thank you. I do have one little thing, and that is, the picnics on the plaza are taking place on Friday nights. It's one of the most fun things that we do in this town, and it is filled with munchkins. I've never seen, you know, I've been here, what, 42 years in our house, and I've never seen so many munchkins in my life, as you see on Friday nights. So I would encourage everybody, members of the council and everybody else, to come down and, and have a good time. Last week's teenage bands were unbelievable. They were just great. So it has been successful since we first started, and it's really a great community gathering place. People of all ages are there, even my age. So that's all I have, really.
John?
Yeah, I, just a couple of remarks. So I've been on the town council now for eight months, and, you know, I joined, kind of in the, partway through a lengthy controversy between the town and Councilmember Green. We learned today that Councilmember Green has, in fact, filed an appeal of the administrative law judge hearing. He has the perfect right to do that. I want to just state the view, I think it's regrettable that he has chosen to do that. Having been on a school board myself for 17 years, my own view, might not be shared by everyone, is that if you're in a public elected position, you have kind of a higher standard that you ought to be holding yourself to, so I just think it's regrettable that Ford has elected to appeal after the town has spent, you know, $100,000 in this process so far. This promises to incur additional expenditures. We had a very extensive administrative law judge process with a very well-reasoned decision. I just think it's unfortunate. I would urge Ford to reconsider his appeal, but again, he has the perfect right to do so. I just think it's not the right thing from the standpoint of the town, and I think, from the standpoint of an ordinary citizen, I think it, it looks bad, in my view. So I'm just sorry that you've elected to go forward with that.
And I wanted to touch on the same topic as John indicated. Ford has filed as, what, is a complaint against the town of San Anselmo in Marin Superior Court, and where he's, he's effectively arguing that the state and local building and fire codes shouldn't apply to his residents, and it's, in my view, not a principled stand on behalf of others, rather, it's an attempt to obtain a personal financial advantage. And let's remember through this whole process, Ford has been treated with fairness. He raised his arguments to the planning staff with expertise in this area, and his arguments were rejected. He appealed to the planning commission, all of whom were appointed by Ford, and they unanimously rejected his arguments. At considerable expense, the town, with Ford's agreement, hired an independent judge who came in and considered all of his arguments at a full and open hearing, and he also rejected his arguments in full and detail. This must stop. It's particularly disappointing, the particularly disappointing thing that I see from this is, by perpetuating this lawsuit, is that you're only hurting the town even more than you already have. The money the town spends, has to spend defending against this lawsuit is money that can't be spent on more worthwhile ventures that will serve the interests of all residents for whom we are supposed to be representing. These litigation costs would be better spent on things such as rebuilding our roads, our town infrastructure, supporting our businesses, and preventing floods. These actions are only really, continuing this lawsuit is only hurting the town, and it's really time that this end. I also believe, as John alluded to, that it sets a terrible example for other residents. What if every applicant decides to follow his lead and sue the town if a decision goes against them? And in my view, the bigger issue for Ford, and for all of us frankly, is how can he serve as a leader of the town that he is suing? The time, in my opinion, has come to choose between being an adversary of the town, seeking, in my view, personal financial gain, or to serve as a leader of this town. Otherwise, you're serving as both a plaintiff and a defendant, which I think is just untenable. So I would join in John's comments and ask that he reconsider your current position and withdraw your lawsuit and act in the best interest of the town.
All right, well, I think I'll respond to this, and my response is basically pretty short. The people who've elected me twice have elected me because I've made decisions to stand up against, and to, and push back against what I call bureaucratic tyranny. And that bureaucratic tyranny here in San Anselmo has manifested in three ways. The first way had to do with my free speech rights. That was the first time I sued the town. The consequence of that, because the town was wrong, was an apology, paying for my costs, and I kept the sign. After that was when I got elected. Principled stand number two had to do with challenging the violation of the right to vote in secret, in the flood fee, the fallout of which you have to deal with during open time at every meeting, where, where person after person comes up here and objects to the Memorial Park plans. That wouldn't have happened if the actual will of the voters had been followed. And now, it's another instance. This time, instead of the right to vote in secret or free speech rights, it's the right to private property. And you know what, Tom? You may not like it, and you may have the judgment that you think that because I'm elected and I sit on this board, that what I do is capitulate to peer group pressure, staff bullying, staff deception, and all other kinds of behavior that I reject, and I do reject it, and that's why I'm challenging it. And I understand that you have your point of view and your position, but it's not one which I respect, and it's not one which I am going to follow. So you're darn right, it's my right, and I exercise that right as I have the opportunity and the right to do so. So I'm, I'm going to do that, and in the meantime, I'm going to, I'm going to sit here and I'm going to act in what I consider to be the best interests of San Anselmo. And what I consider to be the best interests of San Anselmo has a lot more to do in acting with integrity and fairness than repairing potholes. If you, Tom, hadn't made a really big issue about where I've lived for 24 years, you wouldn't have led the town into the position it's in. So it cuts both ways.
Turn your microphone.
Ford, you mentioned a judgment. You know, you had a full, fair hearing, so I want to be clear that you had an administrative law judge sit in our stead and make a decision which, in his answer, he said wasn't even close. I don't appreciate you saying, you may feel it, I feel differently. You used the phrase "staff deception." I'm going to be clear, Ford. I believe, my view, my opinion, when you bought that house, that building, you were handed a building inspection, as I had when I bought my building, and I can tell you, I read it immediately. You know, do I have roaches? Do I have, you know, pipes that are bursting? I read it. I just don't believe a lawyer didn't read it. When you were handed that, the day you bought that house, it said that living place was unlawful. So that's deception to me, you know?
Excuse me, but since this is not an agendized item, we're getting a little bit too much into discussion, so it would be up to the council if you want to choose to agendize it at a future meeting.
I would just say that it would be appropriate to follow the judgment of the decision that's been made, but I'll leave it at that.
All right. Any other further comments? Yes, Debbie, would you? Steph?
I just wanted to mention that we are going forward with slurry sealing on Center Boulevard tomorrow, and it is something that we know is going to impact traffic. There are two electronic signs that have been out to notify people who go on Center that the road will be closed on Wednesday. Those will now be moved further out so that they're further down on Drake, further back into Fairfax, so that people can make decisions about changing roadways and avoiding Center. The Public Works staff has gone to great lengths to get traffic control out there. We have two of our crew members who will help with flagging, and there will be a detour at Madrone that will, there'll be no parking on Madrone, and there'll be flagmen at Nacomas and at Drake to help facilitate traffic flow in that direction. Golden Gate Transit has been advised of the Center Boulevard slurry sealing, and then Fairfax is cooperating as well. One of the electronic signs will be at Pastore and to notify Fairfax residents. And then finally, the hub timing has been adjusted in a similar way that we adjusted it when the Marin Municipal Water District was doing work on Drake, and it helps to facilitate traffic going through. The timing will be from 9:00 to 3:00 tomorrow, and so we're hoping that it isn't horrible, but it may well be a little bit of a nightmare.
Question. Debbie, will the traffic, say, coming from Pastore, which would cross over and come down San Anselmo Avenue and be able to continue down San Anselmo Avenue all the way, will that be allowed to cross over? And then there won't be any crossover at Center and Madrone?
You mean crossover where San Anselmo Avenue crosses Center? Or do you mean people walking?
Coming out of Saunders, crossing Center to San Anselmo Avenue will be blocked?
Only when the work is actually right there.
Okay.
So, you know, we're hoping it won't be as long as it's scheduled.
I've had neighbors asking, who are going to the airport, asking me how to get out of there.
They should go on Drake.
Yeah, but they have to get to Drake. And so to get that way, then they would have to use San Anselmo.
But if you're on this side of Center, you know, take San Anselmo Avenue to Drake. But if you're on the other side of Center, take Drake.
Okay, okay.
I wouldn't count on being able to cross.
I'm sorry, is it just tomorrow, Debbie?
Yes.
Okay.
And then there's other slurry sealing that will be happening Thursday and Friday. All of the residents on those streets have been advised with door hangers, and it has been coordinated. Tunsted's gonna be slurry sealed. It's been coordinated with Picnics on the Plaza. So hopefully the week will go smoothly. It's almost, actually, the last thing in the world we need is any more construction going on in our little area here, but one more thing.
Great, thank you.
And then I just wanted to mention that, as I've mentioned in the past, that the meeting is being videotaped, and so it's important for everybody to speak into their mics and speak loudly.
Okay, great. Thank you, Debbie. Moving on to item one of the consent agenda. The opportunity is now for the public to comment on matters on the consent agenda prior to the council discussion of the agenda. The council then may approve the entire agenda with one action, or alternatively, we can pull matters and discuss and vote on them separately. So does anybody have any comments on, public comment on the, any item on the consent agenda? Okay, saying none. Does anyone want to pull anything? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second?
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Item two, the introduction and first reading of an amendment to the single-use carryout bag reduction ordinance, changing the effective date from January 1, 2015 to an earlier date estimated to be on or about October 9, 2014. Staff report, please.
Yes. At the July 8 meeting, Mayor McInerney indicated that Bill Daniels of United Market contacted him regarding the recently adopted single-use carryout bag reduction ordinance. Mr. Daniels had been under the impression that our ordinance would be effective at the same date as San Rafael's ordinance. And Mayor McInerney asked the council if there was consensus to bring it back to discuss it. So it did come back on July 22, and the council asked staff to come back with a ordinance that would go into effect immediately, meaning as soon as allowable by California law, which is a first reading, a minimum of two weeks later, a second reading, and then 30 days later. If we move ahead with the first reading tonight and the second reading at the September 9 meeting, it would go into effect on October 9.
Okay. Is there any, any questions for staff on this? No? Is there any public comment? Saying none? Any discussion?
No, I'd move to adopt the ordinance.
Okay.
So rewritten.
Don't forget public comment.
He did.
I did, probably, I just did public comment. Yeah, so it's been moved to introduce and waive the first reading of the ordinance amending the date. So it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Do you want to, do you have to read something?
So it's an ordinance of the town of San Anselmo amending the municipal code by adding a new chapter nine to Title V sanitation and health regulating the use of single-use carryout bags.
Okay. Moving on to item three, we have four items that are 2014, 2015 budget revisions. This first one is to approve change orders regarding the Town Hall Tower and painting project in the amount of $24,670.
I wonder if I could just give a little overview before we move on to the four items. We did approve our budget on July 22, and since that time, several items have come to our attention that require council consideration. And each one has a separate staff report, but I just wanted to go over it briefly. Change orders and additional work for the Town Hall Tower, a streamlined housing element update, the zero-waste Marin grant expenditures, and then finally, a monitored fire security alarm system for the library and council chambers. And we'll talk about each of those in more detail as we go through each one. But I did want to outline the two expenditures, the housing element and the fire security alarm system, that are proposed to be funded through the ending balance of the general fund. We actually ended the 2013-14 budget year with a positive balance of revenue over expenditures of $312,000. And those excess funds were not budgeted in the 14-15 year, and typically are utilized at the mid-year budget review for unforeseen circumstances. The finance director does anticipate that when the audit is finished, that that $312,000 figure may rise even more by $100,000. So the two expenditures that are proposed to come out of the ending balance, which is the $50,000 for the housing element and the $25,000 for the fire alarm, is something that we feel that we can do without jeopardizing any mid-year budget revisions that might be needed. So that's sort of the overview, and then maybe we could move on to item 3A that Dan is going to give.
Welcome.
Thanks. I'm Dan Blomquist. I'm senior engineer for the town. Item 3A regards the extra funds to complete improvements regarding, associated with the tower repairs and the painting. Council approved on the 24th meeting the budget for the tower repairs and the library painting and the painting of all Town Hall, approximately $133,000. Since that time, we've entered into contract with Wedge Roofing, and the work's been underway for a couple of weeks now. And certain items of unforeseen nature have come up that have expended what we would have assumed to be the contingency budget on top of the $100,000 through $3,000. These included repair for additional dry rot wood damage on the rails around the tower, the main center beam, as well as the cost of additional manual paint removal on the east side of the library, which was somewhat more substantial and time-consuming than was originally thought. So beyond that, a couple of associated improvements to the exterior of Town Hall and the library have identified that would be the extra amount of funding that is being requested tonight. One would be the repair and expanding of the roof overhang and trellis right outside of the council chambers here, providing rain protection that goes all the way from the administrative building entrance to the end of the building and providing protection over the...
And you're gonna take down the plywood?
The plywood is put in, I'm sorry, for, just for protection during the prep for painting, just to make sure they didn't hurt it with any of the water blasting that's gonna be going on. But in the end, it will be an improved, primarily plywood structure with substrate or surfacing on top for fire resistance and rain resistance. And then the second item that's been identified that's kind of outside of the original scope of the project was replacing the old bird netting around the library, which you see has actually come down for the painting work. So we're putting a completely new bird netting up in place with a longer service life and new warranties and such around the exterior of the library. And then repairing and replacing the electrified pigeon wire that goes along the second level of the Town Hall administrative building, which for some reason or other has become damaged and started to fall off. That actually didn't happen a result of the construction activities. It just was coincidental. So, so the, obviously, the staff recommendation is to move forward with the award of the additional funds in the amount of $24,670, adding to the contract total, and raising the total project cost to date of $178,241, which is approximately 33% over the base contract award. And these improvements approved now would achieve, would achieve the cost savings associated with doing the work. But we already have the scaffolding up, which is, of course, gonna save us several thousand dollars off the top and decrease mobilization time for the contractor who's on the site already.
Any questions on the board?
Yeah, the bird netting and the bird wire, that's replacing the same thing that we've had for some period of years before?
Yes.
Okay.
I just had a question. Is the project sufficiently advanced now that you don't expect anything beyond this at this point? I mean, they've opened up things they need to open up? Anything else?
Yes. There is one new item that I became aware of today, but we do have a budget set aside for some dry rot and stucco repair around the base of the tower. They found that as they're doing repairs to improve the flashing around the base. So I'm not aware of the total of that amount of change order, but we do have budget available already now, already allocated for that line now.
But at this point, you're fairly confident that this will be the extent of it?
Yeah. The extent of the tower repairs, yes. They're actually expecting to be done with the physical tower work outside of the painting of Town Hall by the middle end of next week. So they pretty much have just the interior work and then the rails to go.
Okay. Any other questions?
That was my question, sorry.
Okay. Is there any public comment? Mr. Lamb?
Steve Lamb, 8 Laurel Avenue. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, staff. I was reading this particular item, and the 33% above the base amount seems like a pretty significant number. And I'm wondering if any of these things could have been caught earlier, and if the initial evaluation perhaps could have been done better. That's a question I have. I'm very much in favor of the trellis work. That's always seemed like a little funny thing that, you know, especially when it rains. And then there was, there was a letter from BioCare. So I guess this has to do with the pigeon wiring. And at the top of the letter, it has the date of November 7, 2012. And that seems strange to me because at the bottom, the signature has August 5, 2014. So that's my other question. Is that top date, what does that mean? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Dan, do you want to, are you able to address, there is a date of, from BioCare, do you have any idea what that November, do you want to come up to the mic and, yeah?
Sorry, that was just brought to my attention right now. It looks like a typo.
It does, yeah. Okay, and...
It may have been the original estimate that they gave us. I think it was probably, they've probably been up for two years, and he just changed the...
And do you have any response to the question or the comment that Mr. Lamb raised about why these weren't caught sooner, since they're fairly significant increases?
Well, the additional out of scope work was just work that's been identified since the project has started as additional benefit to protecting the facilities that we're investing in right now and improving the trellis and overhang feature on the front. Regarding to the additional items that were recently covered by contingency, primarily items that were covered and weren't discovered until demolition had started, and they'd started removing certain elements of the tower and around the base of the tower, that we became aware of those items.
Okay, great. Thanks. Is there any other further public comment? All right, saying none, bring it back for discussion and vote? Any comments or otherwise?
Are we gonna go through the items one by one, or do them all at once?
I think we should. They're all kind of separate, so including like a housing. So why don't we go separately? Otherwise, if no comments, I'll entertain a motion to approve the first item.
One more question.
Yeah.
Is there, foreseeing any impact on the future owl population?
Sorry, the plan is still to put the owl box at the top of the tower, and that should be going up in a couple of days.
So, and so the location of, I mean, basically, what I understand is it's a bunch of electric wires to swede birds from perching, right?
Yeah, but that's only around the exterior of the administrative building, not at the top of the tower.
Not gonna impact the owls?
No.
Okay, good.
Thank you. Any discussion, Kay?
It just seems like the same thing that happens when you redo your house. You never know until you get in, and finally, you pull that sheetrock off, and you can see the dry rot underneath, and it's the same kind of thing. So I don't think there's a problem with it.
Yeah?
I'd agree with Kay. And also, I'd say, as we're leaving, you ought to look up at some of this stuff. It's just an example of, I realize it's just plywood, but some of it at this end is just completely rotten through.
I can boot through that root.
So I'll entertain a motion to approve item 3A.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, let's move on to 3B. Streamlined housing element update.
Yeah. As you know, we worked very hard to get our housing element certified a while back, and it actually took more than four years. Lisa White wanted to finish it before she retired in 2010, and it was actually not approved until, I think, 2013. We have just discovered that there is a streamlined process where you can get your housing element approved in a more streamlined way if you qualify for the streamlined process. And we thought we did not qualify, but it turns out that we do. Christina Rourke is a planning consultant who has worked on a number of housing elements. We've worked with her before, and she's, she's really great to work with. And if we want to move quickly and get our housing element approved and put that behind us, this is a way to do it. So what Ms. Rourke would do in the process is first verify our eligibility for the streamlined update, and then do an update of the background data that needs to be done, identify sites that need to be rezoned in order to address the town's shortfall for RENA, and then do a community workshop hearings with the Planning Commission and the Town Council on the draft element, and then submit it to HCD and work with HCD and any revisions to get it adopted. Recognize this, you know, this could be a controversial item, or perhaps not, you know, we just don't know until we get into it. But we thought we should take this opportunity to bring this before you and see if it's something that you want to move on.
Okay. Other questions? Yeah, Ford?
Isn't that what we did before? Didn't we have workshops and do all that stuff before?
We have to do it again.
And so what was the name of the guy that ran, that we hired to?
Jeff Baird.
Right, Jeff Baird.
Yeah, and we don't...
Why not Jeff Baird?
You know, he perhaps was overextended in that process, but we had an awful time getting, moving forward with it.
I see. So you weren't happy with his level of efficiency?
Yeah.
All right. And then, do you know whether Christina Rourke has other consultancies with municipalities in Marin?
I believe she's doing Tiburon, and she also works as the sustainability coordinator for the Marin Climate and Energy Partnership, of which we are members. And that's, you know, how I first got to know her. She was also a planner for Ross for many years.
And so is the decision to tag her as the, as the person who, if this is approved, would be employed, was that your call, or was she referred by somebody else? How did that process work?
I believe it was Tiburon that utilized her. And because the last process went so long and was very frustrating and elongated, knowing that Christine has worked already on one expedited process, and knowing that she's very efficient, very responsive, she came and spoke to us when our climate action plan was presented. She did all the climate action plans for the cities. She's very efficient and very cognizant and sensitive to local issues. I think she's a really good choice for us.
Okay, thanks.
John?
Given the amount of controversy locally on housing elements, I'm a little worried that there's this December 31 this year date that you would actually have to do, by then you would have to do all this. What happens if it, what happens if there is controversy? What happens if it, what happens if there is controversy and you, and you get past that date? I mean, have you sort of wasted your money?
No, because we have to do a-
You still have to do the plans, it just wouldn't be expedited anymore.
So if it goes beyond it, then we've got to start.
We would use her regard, so even if, even if we miss that date, you're still going to go, you'd stick with her and this, the fifty thousand dollars will carry you through to the end of that, of that process.
Yeah, we would have a non-expedited process then. And, you know, probably move into the, maybe the three years with HCD process, but, but yeah. And it might cost more because it would take more time.
Well, because her proposal presumably is based on the assumption that it would be an expedited process. And so if it's not, then she's going to come back and say, well, I'm going to have to amend my statement of work. It's going to be more now. So it's a bit of, so you haven't, but you haven't lost anything in your view because you would have done all the work that you would need to do anyway.
Yes, I think the work would be, you know, the time and effort would be well spent.
Yeah, so she'd have to get on it pretty quick, I think, wouldn't she, to try to hit that date?
Yes, we're sort of behind, behind.
One of the, one of the issues that comes up, of course, is the RENA numbers. I know that she has extensive work in climate planning. Does she also have work in, in dealing with the RENA numbers?
Yes, she does. She, she's done, I believe it's Tiburon. I've said that three times. I believe, I think it's Tiburon. But she also was a planner for Ross, so she was involved.
The what numbers?
RENA numbers, Regional Housing Needs Assessment.
Oh, okay, sorry, thank you.
RENA numbers, it's our numbers.
RENA numbers, sorry.
You'll know a lot about it soon.
I know a lot of acronyms, but not that much.
Debbie, do you have any estimate on what kind of money the savings would be if this expedited housing element was put forward by December rather than dragging it out longer? I mean, we're looking for fifty thousand dollar expenditure. What's, what do you think the payback is?
I'm not sure that, that it would be a lot more to do the longer process because there's just more time involved in, in the middle of, you know, dealing with public comment and, and, you know, any kind of upset maybe from the community. So it seems to me that, that if we don't, if we get stuck somewhere, I think the process is the same. It's just expedited. And if you end up not doing it through HCD, you know, most of the time that it sat at HCD, we weren't doing anything. You know, it was awaiting their review. So, you know, I mean, we might be talking another ten thousand dollars or something like that, but I don't think it would be tremendously more if we ended up not expedite, not making the December thirty-first deadline.
I have a few more.
Okay.
So I'm a little bit confused. Did the process we do with Jeff Baird, we adopted that, didn't we?
Yes, we did, but it's only good for five years and since it took four years, yeah, since it took four years to get it approved.
Oh, no wonder you don't want to hire him again. Okay. All right, so that's one of the things that was, was confusing me. So it's, it's not, it's not like, it's not like we have a truck with the motor on in the scales that's waiting to go forward that hasn't been approved that should have been earlier. This, it's yet again, a whole new and another cycle.
That's right, it's another cycle. And this is a chance to do it fast.
I see. And so then have you had any discussions with her about what we would expect to receive from her in the event that the, we don't make the expedited cutoff?
No, we went forward with the idea that we could, that we could do the streamlined update.
And in terms of that, has she given you kind of a, what does she think our chances are of getting it done in the next four months?
She thought it was doable, but tight.
Are we likely to have any controversial issues in that plan?
Well, I don't know. I don't know if there's any rezoning that will be needed. We, the last time around, I think the controversial item was the homeless shelter. And you, you had to designate a zone where a homeless shelter would be allowed by right.
And that was Greenfield, right?
Greenfield and I believe some Drake.
Yeah, and that was done.
And, and that, that was done, yes. So, you know, we do have-
We're not going to have the same issues that some of the local towns have.
Really, Fairfax.
Well, like Fairfax.
Yeah, Fairfax. And Fairfax sounded like they were doing sort of a wholesale rezone. But I think in general, my understanding, it is our zoning is appropriate for some multifamily in the, in the close-in areas.
Well, you're, you mentioned-
This is a question?
I'm sorry, yeah. The change in two thousand and thirteen in the second units, wouldn't that positively affect, in a meaning, in a positive manner, the housing elements?
And that was actually an outcome of our housing element, that we said we would make a change to our second unit and we did.
Than last time.
Yes, yes.
And just so I'm clear, the expedited process or streamlined process, would that, would there be a more streamlined or shorter public comment period or would the public still have the same opportunity to participate as they would in a non-streamlined process?
The public would have ample opportunity. I think that's, you know, really important. There's no point in doing it without that.
Okay, is there any public comment on this item? Mr. Lamb?
Steve Lamb, Laurel Avenue. Following the issues that other towns have had, have been having and the county, I was curious why it wasn't an issue here, so. And I'm curious to know if, if this will be controversial. My question is, the town manager has mentioned three years or five years and then the staff report mentioned seven years. And I'm aware that, I know at the county especially, they're, they're working on their element and it's good for seven years. So I'm wondering if that is the case here, if we do this successfully and it's accepted by the state, does that, does that cover us for the seven-year period or is it a shorter period? Thanks.
It's five years.
Okay, all right, thanks. Is there any other public comment? Saying none, bring it back for discussion and vote on item three B. Any other discussion or otherwise I'll entertain a motion to approve it.
Well, I agree with you, Tom. I want to make sure the public has comment, but as we saw in Fairfax, I don't think time is, is an issue. I think people speak out if they hear the issue. So I'd rather move forward and have the conversation and address the issue rather than, than have it take longer. And if we're not losing money, I don't think we're particularly saving money, maybe we're save some money, but we've got to expend the money anyway, so I would move forward.
All right, any other comment or otherwise I'll entertain a motion?
Yeah, I just have one comment and, and that is that it just, it seems like such a shakedown that in, in principle, I've always questioned and continue to question really consenting to it. I'm not suggesting at this point that we not, but over time, it becomes tiresome when our ducks are lined up in a row and every five years we have to spend fifty thousand dollars or seventy-five thousand dollars to do something that we really don't need to do. So I didn't want this to go by without making that comment.
I'd like to just agree with Ford on that one, but doesn't mean I won't vote for it.
Okay, is there, I'll entertain a motion. I'd say move.
Second?
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Posed? Okay, it's passed. I move on to item three C, which is a zero waste Marin grant expenditure of approximately forty-six thousand dollars to be offset by grant funding. Debbie?
Yeah, this is a grant that comes through the Marin County Hazers and Solid Waste Joint Powers Authority specifically for zero waste projects. The town is a member of the Hazers and Solid Waste JPA. And each year, the JPA gives grant funding to each of the members, which are all the eleven cities and the county in order to put forward zero waste programs. In the past three years, I've submitted for the grant and we've used it for the Conservation Corps North Bay who come out during Country Fair Day and have zero waste stations at the firehouse, at the barbecue, at Creek Park, and then on San Anselmo Avenue during the, the Country Fair Day. We also use them for purchasing recycling containers. We purchased all new recycling containers at the park, Memorial Park. And so those are the two expenditures that we've used it for this year and then they carried over. This year, the funds are not going to carry over anymore. So we have about forty-six thousand dollars in the fund and if we don't spend it, we're going to lose it. So I went into a lot more detail to find out the things that we can spend it on. And some of the things, it has to forward the zero waste program, get the, the idea out to people about the zero waste. So some of the recommendations that staff has is to purchase canvas shopping bags with zero waste logo and the town logo that would complement the single-use bag ban and then we could give them away at Country Fair Day. Another thing people talk about a lot that are popular giveaways are kitchen composting containers that we could give to attendees of any composting workshops or other events in conjunction with giving composting workshops for residents. And again, utilizing them for the zero waste station at Country Fair Day and perhaps expanding that program to Breakfast with Santa. Another thing that, that Dave is interested in having is portable recycling containers for town events so that they would be easily movable for the events. And I got some, some help with this from Mill Valley. Danielle Stoudt, who is a planner at Mill Valley, also lives in San Anselmo and she gave me some of these ideas. I like this one, the outdoor water refilling stations that can be used for refilling reusable water bottles, which would be nice at events. And then another idea are hand dryers for public restrooms instead of using paper towels. So all, all that looked like in sufficient volume that it would be about the forty-five thousand dollars. Some items are more expensive than others, like the outdoor water refilling stations and the hand dryers.
Okay, is there a question? Yeah, John?
Where does this money actually come from?
The, the Hazers and Solid Waste JPA is funded through tipping fees from the Redwood landfill. So each of the, so the tipping fees are set by, who there's, by the, by the JPA, I guess. And a small portion of it is set, so they are able to set the budget for the JPA and then utilize a portion of the tipping funds to fund the-
Yeah, I realize this is sort of accumulated money, but it seems like actually quite a lot of money for something.
I know. I should have been spending it as I went along.
I just wanted to ask about the, so the, the outdoor water refilling stations, are those fixed things or are they portable? Are you thinking about, are you talking about plumbing them into the ground or are they just, are they just things that only are used at events?
She sent me, Mill Valley has them.
Well, no, but I wasn't sure whether-
I think they're, I don't think they're plumbed.
They're portable?
Yeah.
So they're just, they're just wheeled out for events or something?
This is something that the Quality of Life Commission is, is anxious about is how do we get people to refill their bottles?
Yeah.
They don't want plastic bottles at Country Fair Day. And they came out with this huge glass refilling thing that just felt kind of dangerous. So I'm hoping that this would be an answer for that.
Although presumably somebody has to supply the water for it, right? Because it's, you're, you're getting water delivered presumably, right? I mean, because it's not, it's not connected to the local water supply.
No, but I know where the hose is.
Well, I know, but I'm just, I'm just sort of trying to visualize how it works.
And I'm not sure because it is possible, like I had the, the thought that, that if, I think there's both. Portable, portable and fixed. And in the lobby out here would be a great place for a fixed one.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I mean, I'm not saying you do this a lot of them, but if you, it's a lot of money. You could probably afford to have a few fixed ones that would be plumbed, right? So that, so people could come in and fill it up and there are.
Because you know, it's so hard from a drinking fountain to fill up a water bottle. But having a station-
And slow.
Yeah, and slow. And out here would be really perfect.
Okay, any other questions? Yeah, okay.
Debbie, I have a question. How many of those, can, no, canvas bags do we have upstairs still?
I have some of the Hazers and Solid Waste ones and then we have some of the San Anselmo ones, but not a lot, you know, maybe a box.
Okay.
And I know people, you know, people are getting kind of filled with bags.
I think so. And so how many, how many composting containers would you anticipate?
In my grant-
Well, no, I'm just thinking, I'd rather spend it on, there's stuff that I have seen around when I do events with, with Dave. Is that what we really, what I would really like to see us put our money into are these recycling containers for town events. Because time after time, we're killing ourselves using recyclable plates and that kind, and cups and that kind of thing.
They don't get recycled.
And it just all goes into the trash.
Yeah, and, and that's definitely on here as something that we're going to buy. And I actually put them down for last year, but they didn't get purchased. But they're, that's not going to take up forty-five thousand dollars. We kind of need to do all of it to spend all the money.
Thousand kitchen compost containers of all of a sudden.
Well, and I think that, I think those kitchen compost containers we can give away. I think people are interested in them. I've actually heard a lot of people talk about them.
Two things. One, the kitchen composting containers, how much do they cost? Do you know?
Yeah, I have that here.
We just bought one for four ninety-nine at an Ace Hardware. There's a small one.
Yeah, three to five dollars each. Five thousand for a thousand of them.
That seems more interesting than the bags. I mean, I probably have five of those bags at home, but I don't, I don't mean the ones from the town. I mean canvas bags in general. I get them everywhere. And then the public restrooms, we don't have, I think the schools have in, in the men's rooms, waterless urinals. We don't have those in the public areas, do we? Wouldn't that be a zero waste investor? Wouldn't that save a lot of water? I mean, those things save a ton of water.
Not really familiar with their operation.
I'm sure you're not, but I will tell you from, from a man's point of view, there seem to work fine. I mean, that's all I know. And there's no water. Don't ask me how, I, I don't know, but they're used at Brookside and-
That might not be an eligible thing.
No, I would think it's a zero waste. I mean, talk about zero waste. I don't know if it's eligible, but-
Zero water.
There's zero water waste. This is zero waste.
Yeah.
Don't know. Be interesting to look into.
I can look into it.
Not exciting, but you know.
Could you add, can we, is it possible to update our recycling and garbage containers around town?
Yeah, I always add that.
So that's always, because we have, they're not really, I mean, reci, it says recycling over there and it's really just cans. It does not paper, I don't think, is it? It's like-
Well, you know, our garbage company doesn't take cans and paper together, you know, they're not single stream. So I was thinking about that this morning. I don't know, they must have to sort completely.
So it does accept, oh, okay.
I think they, they get, they get in the recycling and then they take them to that plant where they have the-
Okay, I just think that here, Memorial Park, Robeson, they're kind of outdated containers.
Well, the ones at Memorial Park, unfortunately, we bought not two years ago and they have not worked out. The, they were recommended by Marin Sanitary as ones that you can open the door and so the, the garbage people don't have to lift them. They can just drag them out. But they, they, they are all dented, like the people come along and kick them.
Okay, yeah. Okay, so is there any public comment on this item? Saying none, entertain a motion to approve this expenditure? Otherwise, I'll-
Say move.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Posed? All right, let's move on to item three D, which is to approve an expenditure for a fire security system for the library building and council chambers in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars. system for the library building and council chambers in the amount of $25,000, which is an estimate from the ending balance in the general fund.
Yes, as you know, we had a fire, a very small fire in the police department about three weeks ago. We are still recovering from that and still finding things that have gone wrong because of it. When the firefighters were here, they said that without the monitored fire security alarm system that was put in, in the building after the flood at the behest of the fire department, we very well may have lost town hall altogether. Nobody was here, and that could, it was in an interior office with all the windows closed, and it very well could have become a really big fire without that fire alarm system. That got us thinking about the library and the council chambers, both very old, 100-year-old buildings that, you know, we do not want to lose. We had talked about putting smoke detectors in each building, but the fire department told me it was just useless, because if people are here during a fire, you know there's a fire, people get out, you call the fire department, it all works. If, if you have a smoke detector that goes off when people aren't here, nobody hears it, and so it's not worth having. So the reason that we would recommend a monitored system is the very reason that town hall was not more badly damaged, because the smoke detector went off, it called Redwood Security, Redwood Security called the fire department, and they were here. So we had actually gotten a estimate about six months ago for this, when we talked about it, and then it kind of fell by the wayside, but after the fire, it just seemed very important that we protect our facility, especially now that it's newly painted.
Okay, any other questions? Was there, and just one quick question, fire trucks came out like a week later, or a few days later, does that sound familiar? My son, what was that about?
It's, this whole thing has been, one thing leads to another. The, about, about four or five days after the fire, the fire alarm went off again. And it's because when they cleaned the ducts in the upstairs, some debris got into the drain line, which made a leak in our hallway, and filled up in the kitchen, the little fire alarm box with water. And so it went off.
Okay.
And they came out, and there was nothing, and then they reset it, and they went back, and it went off again. So three times. And finally, they decided that it was that particular fire alarm box in the kitchen, and they bypassed it. And then, and that's why, it's just, it's one thing after another, it's amazing. I'm sure that the cost of this fire is well over $100,000 now, and the costs keep adding. They, because of that drip, they had to tear sheet rock off of stairs, and then they had to fix that. It's just, the back door in the police department doesn't work anymore, because they propped it open and burned out the motor. So we just keep finding more and more things that are going to have to be fixed. Not necessarily the fire, but the work after the fire.
Okay. Is there any public comment on this? Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion to approve this expenditure.
So moved?
Second?
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yeah, aye.
Opposed? It's passes, so that's it, and we will adjourn the meeting tonight in honor of two people. One is Donna Bjorn, who is known by most, if not all of us, a stalwart volunteer in Marin County, been president for several years, several times, of the Marin County League of Women Voters, served on the Ross Valley Sanitation District Board, the Marin Commission on Aging, and the College of Marin Citizens Oversight Committee. I think she was at a meeting within the last year where we were discussing garbage rates and the like, and she came and advocated there. So a really great person, and she unfortunately passed away at the end of July in San Anselmo. And the other one I'd like to close in honor of, Debbie pointed me to this, is I believe it's pronounced William Bin, a, for many years, a resident of San Anselmo, and it appears he, I believe he passed away from cancer. Was a relatively young guy, in his early 50s, with young children, grew up in the area of, in Petaluma, went to St. Vincent High School, and was a fly fisherman, and a lot of activities, and a longtime resident of San Anselmo. So I'd like to close in honor of him as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Donna was a very nice lady.
She was.
She was the best. She was so great.